All right, we're running back there. All right, seeing that it's 6:11 on Monday, November 3rd, I'll call the Town of Webster zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and it will be on the town's YouTube page usually within a couple of days. First item on our agenda is our meeting minutes from October 7th.
Those will be ready for your next meeting.
Next meeting, 2026 draft meeting schedule?
Yep, it's right there in front of you. There is only one day that you aren't on the first Tuesday of the month, and that's next November. And I'm trying to remember there was a holiday or something that forced, or is it election? That's the election. So we're not allowed to have meetings on the election. You're not bound by this. This is just for reference only. If you need to schedule or reschedule or cancel, you can absolutely do that.
Yeah, I know I won't be here for Tuesday, March 3rd. I know that. I will not be here.
Okay, I'll make a note of that.
But everything else looks good.
All right, you need to vote.
Is there a motion to adopt the 2026 proposed meeting dates?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Ms. Morgan, can you pull the board?
Yep. Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Chahowski?
Yes.
Mr. Piarro?
Yes. Okay, public hearings for the two variance applications. So, Ms. Morgan, we have to open the public hearing tonight, you said, right?
You do.
We do, okay. Unless we have an extension from the applicant?
You still have to open the hearing.
We do.
In order for them to extend.
Okay, so if we open, then they could either present tonight, or they could present in December?
Yes, you'd have to make a decision at the December meeting.
No, we have to decide that. Okay, okay. So, we have to open to the applicant, we have to open the public hearing. A variance requires at least four members to be here to make a decision. Presumably, the one or both of the absent members would mull in and become eligible to vote by signing a waiver that they've watched or read the meeting minutes. So you can make the presentation tonight, or you could wait until December. If presumably, we would have a full board or at least four members here to hear your presentation. The choice is yours. But from what I'm being told, we do have to open the public hearing though, right? So I will do those formalities and we'll open both at the same time, just because it's the same set of facts, the lots are next to each other. So I'll read one and include both of the street names. So in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Webster zoning by law, section 650-11C, Webster's only Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on a variance application for relief from front yard setback requirements to construct a new house located at 38 Bates Point Road and to construct a new house at 40 Bates Point Road. The assessor ID of the 38 Bates Point Road is 50-a-15, and the ID of the 40 Bates Point Road is assessor ID 50-a-15. The applicant application was submitted by Mr. Tom Rovain of 482 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Massachusetts. Applicant owner said site is located in the Lake Residential and Watershed Protection zoning districts. So Mr. Rovain, would you care to present tonight in front of the three of us, or wait until December, when you may have a full board to hear your presentation? And you'll go tonight? Okay. So procedure will be, first, we'll hear from the town with a staff report.
Okay, I'm going to quickly pull this up. These two lots were created recently by an A&R plan back in March. This was one whole lot at one point. Here's the A&R plan that took the lot and divided it into three. These two lots here are what are being considered for tonight. You had one comment from the conservation agent that referenced the floodplain and the proximity to sensitive wetlands. And for the most part, I'm just going to pull it up on the map for you to see.
What was Mr. Wiggles' worst comment? I didn't see that.
Okay. I'll go get that for you. So here, you can tell the lot has not been, the A&R lines have not been put into the GIS system.
Uh huh.
So these are now three lots. The comment from the, where's the conservation agent? Oh, we did not upload those. I apologize. But I can read to you here because I did prepare a rough preliminary draft for you to consider. Why isn't it on here? Okay, here we go. Yes, please consider the fact that this lot has fairly extensive sensitive wetlands, including floodplain. Those were his comments for both lots.
All right.
So here is the, and I'll just pull up the, I'm sure a lot of you already know where this is. So that's the staff report.
All right. You have a question?
Who was the lot subdivided, broken into three separate lots?
This whole lot was divided into three lots this past March.
It was in March.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Rovain, please.
Senator, as stated, this year, per depiction. For the record, my name is Zach Lesn from Existing Grade.
You turn your mic on. Just push the button. There you go. Thank you.
There we go. For the record, my name is Zach Lesn from Existing Grade, one of the design engineers and surveyors for the applicant, Mr. Rovain, again regarding 40 and 38 Bates Point Road. So as stated, the intent of the application is to request a variance for reduction in the required front yard setback, which is currently set at 20 feet within the Lake Residential, and we are requesting a reduction down to 10 feet, to kind of go hand in hand with the comments provided through conservation regarding the wetlands. So as Ms. Morgan had stated, the lots did go through an A&R in March. But one thing that I wanted to depict to the board is, these lots were created back in the early 50s on one of these old lake layout plans, which I have a copy of. This is the old residential subdivision plan for these lots. And I highlighted in green the two lots that we're referencing this evening. So this was used to recreate the lots as they always used to exist. And during the course of time, as you can see from this new plan that was created, there is now a wetland line that comes in and runs down through here, which I'm highlighting right now. And what that does is that does leave buildable area between those wetlands and Bates Point Road. So the intent of reducing the front yard setback down to 10 feet, it would allow for more protection to those wetlands and allow a more wholesome development of these two lots. But again, the intent of that A&R that was done was to redefine those lots that were created in the 1950s to address the limits of the floodplains of the lake and the wetlands that are on site and have a new plan that formally defines those. Again, the old lots, they had about 200 feet of side yard setback. I don't have a full depiction of when this floodplain came into play and when these wetlands kind of started coming in here. So there is, I don't want to say lagoons, that's not the right word, but there is just a swampy area in the back that I don't believe was in existence fully as it's shown today on that old subdivision plan. So again, the intent to reduce that front yard setback is still to keep these as a buildable lot with harmony in the area as it was intended when these lots were created in the 50s. So again, I can go back and forth and show you this old subdivision plan that's on record.
Where you use that subdivision plan from?
The old subdivision plan?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
This is dated 1958.
Okay.
So again, it shows that there's sideline distances of 162 feet, 200 feet respectively. And then with the layout as it exists today, we only have 61 feet and 56 feet before we had to start carving around these wetlands to create the required uplands. So.
That's interesting. I've been on the lake since 90s, and I don't recall that cove's always been there, so.
Yeah, and again, almost every lot on the lake has an old 1950s subdivision plan. Whenever we do surveys out here, we always have to go find the original ones because they tell you exactly what the frontage was to redefine these lots. So there's two lots now. They've always been in existence. It's just we've been redefining them through that A&R that was done in March.
So presumably, somebody bought the two lots together, therefore they were combined, and then you're just bringing them back to how they were originally surveyed.
Correct. And I can't say with 100% certainty that an A&R was ever done to formally merge those lots back together in the way that the GIS map shows it. There is another plan that was done.
But there was co-ownership at one point?
Yes.
And these lots were sold and then?
Yeah, they could have just been clumped together through a deed conveyance at that point, and the lot lines may have been dropped over time, even though an A&R may have never been done to formally remove them. So again, that's the gist of why we're requesting that front yard setback, is to still allow a buildable nature of these lots and still allow some room to formally protect those wetlands.
So protecting wetlands isn't, I'm going to get into the requirements for variance. So what's unique about the site conditions, whether it's the soil condition, shape, or topography, that's causing you to move? Because I look at both of these, and I see, one of them I see 19 feet, and the other one I see almost 18 feet from your delineated wetlands. So what's unique about the soil or the shape or topography that's causing you to move that house forward towards the road?
So it would have been, again, when these lots were originally created, it's my own professional opinion that these wetlands weren't there in that way, so that they're there now.
I'm talking about as they exist right now. I understand what may have been there back in the 1950s, but there's criteria for variance, and like I said, it's the site, the first condition, and so it's an and, and we'll get to the other three, is you have to have unique site conditions, which is circumstances relating the soil conditions, shape, or topography that are causing the house to be shifted forward. So is there some soil condition back there that won't support the foundation that makes that?
That would be perfectly it, is that when you have wetlands, you have hydroric soils, which are more difficult to build a foundation on at that point. So if there are the wetlands back there, you're going to find hydroric soils, you're going to find more mucky soils. So by pulling this further away, we get into more stable soils for a foundation at that point.
All right, okay. So you're claiming the soil condition, and fixing the soil condition would cause significant hardship?
I believe so. I mean, you're dealing with foundational issues at that point.
All right, and you're looking at building a single-family home?
Correct.
Asking a stupid question. Single-family homes are allowed in the Lake Residential zoning district?
Yes, and those would be in harmony with all the other.
I know, that's a silly one, but it's, I'm just getting it on the record.
For the record.
And a single-family home, you won't cause any excessive, this won't cause any excessive noise, dust, or debris to the neighborhood?
Nope.
No public nuisances?
No, I mean, again, it's in harmony with everything else that's built out there. It's not like we're trying to put a commercial or anything out there.
Okay. Any questions? Are you, Jeff, or Dan? Any questions from the public or comments? Yes, sir.
Ron Andrew, I own property right there.
Yeah, at the.
Got a couple of questions.
Yes, name and address, please.
Ron Andrew, 40 Bates Point Road. Couple of questions on this A&R plan, which was just approved in March. They're referring to a plan in the 50s. Was that ever an approved plan, or is this currently it's being approved? Because I didn't see any lots subdivided. This land actually came off of my lot prior to me purchasing it. They broke it off and made these house lots out of it. I'm not opposed to the project by no means. What I'm opposed to is if they just currently got an A&R on these lots, they should stick with regulations that are current now. And 10 feet off the road is a little absurd, not only for line of sight for me coming out of the driveway, but being so close to the road, snowplows, trash trucks, whatever it is. Why wouldn't they straighten the houses up to get it back into that 20-foot?
So in your opinion, this would go against the public good? It would be a detriment to the public good by?
Right, the way they configured the lots, one lot going behind the other lot, to get the square footage they needed to get to buildable lots. If that lot didn't go behind the other one, they could move the house back and stay out of that buffer that they're concerned about. I think one of them, they're concerned about getting into the wetlands, and the other one, I think there's enough room away from the wetlands, but the property line is there behind. The lot for 38 is behind 40, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Is that someone that's on?
Yes. So if they didn't have that lot line go behind 40, 40 could be moved back. It's the way that they configured these lots is making a hardship that they're looking for.
Yeah, it does go back there.
I don't know if I could respond to that at the moment. Wait a minute.
Yeah, wait a minute. I got a question on your soil conditions of your lot, since you're in the butter. Is it soil conditions fairly mucky, swampy?
That, that whole area?
Yeah.
It's all, that whole cove is just swampy and?
So pretty difficult to build a foundation on it?
I would think, and again, I'm not here to oppose what they're building.
I'm just asking the question.
I would think it's tough to build a house on that lot, or two houses at that point.
So 38 has, as you can see, it'll have access out around the swamp, or both will be dogged rock access around the swamp. If it's not dogged access, again, that little strip was created to?
He's getting closer to one.
Yeah, I'm not picking you up on the.
Yeah, I got you.
YouTube.
So that strip was created to ensure that those lots have the required area. Because the way that these deeds are written is that the rear lot line for these goes to the high watermark of Webster Lake. So part of doing this was coming in and doing a survey to figure out where that high watermark was, which is shown on the plan. There's a dashed 48. There's a dashed 480 contour, which is kind of limited to the floodplain of the lake, which corresponds to the high water line. And then we had to kind of take that middle lot there, 38, and kind of wrap it around to be able to create the 5,000 square feet of uplands. Because if we use the original lot layout that was done in the 50s, we wouldn't have had the required lot area to even be having a discussion.
Okay.
So if you'd like, I can show you a real quick, the plan from the 50s.
I don't think it makes any difference, it was never recorded or...
Well, this plan is...
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think you're raising, you know... How they... how the A&R was done is not... A&R is go through the planning board. We don't have any jurisdiction in the ZBA for how property lands are subdivided. I mean, you can subdivide a non-conforming lot and make it smaller. You know, you just can't really build anything without a special permit. So, you know, how they decided to draw their property lines is really at their discretion.
I just feel that caused the hardship that they're looking for, the way the property lines are drawn. If they shrunk up the size of the houses they want to put there, they wouldn't need that excess 10 feet. We've configured the house somehow. I believe the houses are gonna be too big for the lot that they're trying to put them on. Footprints there, the 10 feet, if they... You know what I'm saying, if the houses are small. Again, I'm not opposed to them building there, I'm opposed to them being 10 feet off the road. That's remarkable. Rules in zoning is in place now. This is... we shouldn't create a pre-existing non-conforming lot. This is not... you're gonna make a non-conforming lot, it's not pre-existing once you build it. That's my area of concern. I can understand if it was pre-existing non-conforming building on it, but there's nothing on it. And now's the time to prevent it from being non-conforming.
Any questions for this gentleman? Any other member of the public care to make a comment? Any other questions? How big is where the houses again? I'm just curious.
So the ones that we have proposed on the variance plan are 25 by 28 on 38, and then a 30 by 28 on 40. So it's a little bit of a bigger house on the lot that has more kind of usable land on it.
Okay.
Two stories?
Yes.
All right. Are they planning on having basements, just out of curiosity?
No, they're most likely gonna be...
These slabs?
They're gonna be slabs, I mean, I'm sure there's gonna be a groundwater contention over there.
Okay.
But again, just to clarify for the record that I, if I could, the plan that was done in the 50s, that is on file with the Registry of Deeds, and it does have signature from the Webster Planning Board. So at the time that those lots were created, it was intended to be a lot just like every other...
Yeah, that's an issue. That's an issue, what was on the 50s is way beyond the purview of a zoning board.
And I fully understand that that's not within the purview of this board tonight, but just to clarify for the record, and then, you know, again, that that A&R was created with the way that it was shaped to get, again, that required lot area as that floodplain has moved over time.
Okay.
The homes actually have a very small footprint as they are, they're not oversized, home. If you can't, they're not allowed with setbacks and that, but they're... They're just... there's not a lot of room to build anything. So that'd be, you know, fit with the, pretty much what's enabled it.
Any questions? No? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearings for... What would be 38 and 40 Bates Point Road? Or is... you say something?
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion.
Motion seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Morgan, can you pull the board?
Yes.
Chahowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Piarro?
Yes. So there'll be a... We already kind of have a draft decision, but because we don't have enough members to vote on it, we can't decide tonight. So most likely, this will be decided at a meeting on December 2nd. So you're welcome to come back and watch us deliberate, but we can't accept any other information or exhibits, so... All right?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, so next meeting date, December 2nd, works for everybody? Still digesting, that's a Tuesday after Thanksgiving. Okay. Works for Ms. Morgan, she won't... she'll be happily retired, so...
Yes, I will.
All right, so...
But you're in good hands with Tracy.
All right, so since we're still being recorded, it's been fun, I think. It must have been eight years since you've been here?
Yeah.
So thank you, I know it's... We've had some fun decisions, some interesting stuff. We have some interesting stuff in the hop that might be coming before us, so don't let that scare you away. But, uh... But yeah, thank you personally from me to you. It's, you know, I really appreciate the work that we do for the last eight years there.
It's been fun for me too, I've really learned a lot, you all are a pleasure to work with.
All right. Yeah, I'm scared too.
Yeah, 43 years.
Yeah.
You are a help and resource.
Well... Thank you, I learned a lot from all of you.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn to December 2nd?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.